To order.
What was that?
Okay, I will take the motion to approve the minutes of July seventeen twenty twenty three.
Second.
All favor. Appointments, recognitions, and resignations. Appointment of Christopher Wygits as full-time firefighter EMT at the probationary base rate of twenty seven fifty-six effective August fourteen twenty twenty-three.
Move appointment.
Second.
All favor. Appointment of George Adams as launch captain at Northeast Harbor Marina for the summer season at the rate of twenty-two dollars effective August eight twenty twenty-three.
Move appointment.
Second.
All favor. Consent agenda. Item A, thank you note from Sophia Taylor for the Reynolds Strategy Award. Item B, Acadia Area League of Towns request for state assistance on solid waste disposal issue. Item C, Hancock County Commissioners Meeting Minutes from July six twenty twenty-three. Item D, Hancock County Commissioner's Special Meeting Minutes from July eighteen twenty twenty-three. And item E, Notice of Hancock County Commissioner District Caucus, August seventeen twenty twenty-three, election of budget advisory committee members.
Move acceptance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All favor. And then select and supports.
I have two items. Um, Jolynn, is there gonna be a League of Towns get together in the fall? And I just was jogged my memory when I saw.
Oh, we haven't got one planned.
It's kind of a nice tradition.
It is, we sort of lost the.
Yeah, well, with COVID, but maybe we could bring that back.
Look at the last meeting, we will be meeting till September again, so I hope.
Right. Usually it was in October, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was true, okay.
Uh, the other thing is, I just wondered where we stand on the short-term rental ordinance. Um, I know went back to Luso, but Rick, have they met or discussed it or anything?
There was a meeting scheduled last month that got postponed to be held again this coming month.
In, in, you mean in August?
In August.
Uh-huh.
It is on the agenda. Um, we made some preliminary decisions regarding how information and requests are received and in what order they will be addressed. The, um, obviously, the, uh, short-term rentals, having been addressed last year, is sitting up there at the front of the pack uh, to be reviewed. Other work is being done prior to our meeting with our consultant, uh, with other towns. We're looking for some favorable information to be brought back to us that we can compare and balance with other communities to see how we fit uh, with the rest of the island.
That's great.
Um, but yeah, it definitely has not been lost off the radar. It is, uh, high on the radar, uh, not only on our priority list, but amongst the public, from what I understand, so.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'm looking for some interesting conversation and dialogue as we go forward. Uh, whether we have, uh, a prepared ordinance for the next town meeting remains to be seen. I don't know what the group will feel, and I certainly can't speak to that right now. I'm, the liaison can only pass on what information I hear from the meetings and and where, uh, where we stand.
Do you have a date for that meeting?
I don't. We usually receive our date from the consultant, and it usually, I would anticipate it may be uh, at five P M. Prior to our next select board meeting. It usually happens uh, for an hour prior to a select board meeting.
Okay.
So, that's whether that happens or not. I can't speak to that either, being summertime, but, uh, that's when it usually happens.
Thank you.
So that we're not, you know, interfering with other groups' meetings and space and and all that, so.
Thanks.
That's where we're at.
Thanks. All right, anything else? Well, okay, unfinished business. Discussion of resident concerns regarding traffic on Jordan Pond Road by Acadia National Park Traffic in general letter due July eighteen twenty twenty-three.
This manager, Mr. Ford Select. My name is Charles. And it was my letter that you received and to you. Um, I think maybe it would be most helpful if I use my small bit of time to try to frame the issue as I see it. And the most fundamental fact uh, is that Mr. Rockefeller anticipated this problem in nineteen fifty and dedicated to the park a roadway that's to be used for access to the Jordan Pond area. Um, that unfortunately has been honored more in the breach than the observance. Um, but nonetheless, that's what that road is there for, and it's not our street, which was intended to provide access. Most specifically, my concern, and you'll hear from other people who may have different concerns, but it's the Jordan Pond House, Dawnland. Uh, the fact that, and this is the truth, three twelve in the morning on October, um, excuse me, July thirty-first, the Dennis tractor trailer driving up our street. Um, that's the most extreme we've seen, but what's significant, I think, is that it's, that occurred more than three weeks after we had had an information session um, with the park and friends of Acadia, uh, at which point it was very clear that we had a concern as a neighborhood. Uh, and exactly nothing has occurred in the intervening five weeks. I mean, this guy comes earlier and earlier. Um, that's just completely unacceptable. It's a residential street, no business on the street. Uh, and it, it sort of goes on and on, but the fact is, is that the ward and select people, however many years ago it might have been, um, recognizing this, I think is the case, that it's not fully enforceable. Put up those signs that say no through traffic, an attempt to have park traffic recognize and observe, uh, our rights as their neighbors. Um, can I really truly fault the park for the problem? I think frankly, yes. Uh, they, there's an inherent conflict of interest here. Uh, there's a concession up there. It's money for the park. The better the concession does, better the park does. Um, they're essentially regulating themselves, and that's a tough position for the alpha dog on Mount Desert Island, uh, to be placed in. And you know what? Congress, there's mention of that in my letter, Congress anticipated the problem and said, hey, you know what? Those concessions have to be uh, operated in a manner that's consistent with the values of park system and Acadia National Park in specific. And I would suggest that running multiple, and you see the list before you, multiple tractor trailers up and down our street three days a week is not consistent with the values of park in any way, shape, or form. It's, the trucks are noisy, they truly are dangerous. I have, um, I apologize. I, it's, um, that's, it's a, I'm not a traffic engineer and I'm not a, a videographer, but that's, uh, one and a half minute clip at that address uh, that I put together showing what we conceive our street to be. And you know what? It's a special, special place. I've lived a number of places in my life, never anywhere like Jordan Pond Road. It is truly a neighborhood in every sense of the word. And it, the, the sum and substance is that, that uh, those trucks are noisy and dangerous, and you'll see in the video just how noisy and dangerous they can be. Uh, it's, I guess what we're here to ask, or at least what I'm here to ask, is, uh, for somebody who's in a greater position of parity with the park uh, to step in and at least bring them to the table with us, so that there is some effort to resume, resolve the problems, because you know what? I mean, Coca-Cola and Budweiser are great companies, I'm sure. But we don't need to see them advertising at twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five miles an hour as they sit by our houses. It, it's, it's just, this just isn't right. And I guess unless you have any questions, I would invite some of my friends and neighbors to step up and, you know, speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There.
Yes.
Um, what kind of limitations are there on what the town can actually do about traffic control on that road?
So, it's a public grid. Um, not a whole lot of restriction beginning where we set the speed limit, except by the state.
I think you need to speak a little louder.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have really the authority to drop the speed limit any lower than it already is. Uh, we have put up that one traffic radar sign headed southbound. Um, so it has some traffic data that would indicate that yes, there are speeding vehicles from time to time, but the overall speed is the average is about seventeen to twenty miles an hour. Um, he is correct when he says that the no-through traffic signs are unenforceable. We have no ability to enforce that from law enforcement um, standpoint. Um, I know that the letter also references truck traffic or engine braking, which we've talked to legal counsel in the past about putting signs up like that, but those are really designed as safety features for vehicles. I know other towns and municipalities have put those up, no engine brakes for certain hours. Uh, but we've chose not to do that, uh, for either town, just because it is, uh, just in the face of safety. Uh, and I have data too that I can, now that we have that sign there, we have the ability to really go into specific days, times, uh, find out volumes of traffic if it is busy times and others. Uh, from the data that I pulled, which we did a hundred, two hundred and fourteen days, uh, and there was twenty-nine thousand vehicles. Um, just heading in, in one direction under the pond road. So.
And does that include trucks and any regular passenger cars?
That's all traffic.
Yeah. How many again, could you say?
Uh, so two hundred and fourteen days, we had twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-three vehicles.
Wow.
Um, is there a possibility that the town could dead-end that road?
From a town standpoint? I, I guess I leave that up to you guys. Yeah, I think.
I mean, it's.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be in your purview, dead end of the road, if you so choose.
So I think we could put up signs until we're blue in the face and, and you're still gonna have that.
Yeah, and other municipalities around the country, especially Google Maps and just directing traffic, and they've tried to do ordinances to prevent. But then it just gets into litigation because it's not enforceable from a main state statute. It's the town enforcing ordinance, and it just gets into a mess because then we can't present it to the, the court. We have to, the town's attorney, it is really costly to do any kind of ordinance enforcement for traffic.
The problem with dead-ending that road though is that, see, in the wintertime, that's the only access.
Well, then we.
The park road.
We talk to the park and say, you've got to keep your access open there. Cause it'll go as far as the second parking lot anyway, and there'll be a big pile of snow, and it'll be a barrier. It's a short piece of road.
I don't know.
I have a question.
Maybe you could talk to Kevin, but.
I don't know.
Yeah, so could you uh, speak to the, uh, status of Stanley Brook Road? I know the letter made reference to these vehicles should be using Stanley Brook Road to access the Jordan Pond House and are there residences on Stanley Brook Road? There aren't, are there?
No, Kevin's here, but he couldn't speak more to that, so.
Yeah, so a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, traffic on the Jordan Pond Road itself. That truck traffic certainly can use Stanley Brook Road. They can use Park Loop Road coming in from two thirty-three if they choose to. Uh, John Ith is the manager for Jordan Pond House, general manager, so John came tonight and can talk a little bit in specifics about the volume of deliveries they have on a weekly basis. It's about twenty-six a week, and, and John can kind of characterize that, so some of the traffic may be related to the pond house, but some of it, I'm sure, is not. Some of it certainly is people who are trying to access Academy National Park. You know, Waze, a couple of summers ago, Waze was directing people for people who use the Waze app. It was directing people down Jordan Pond Road as the shortest route. And so we actually were able to work with, um, the app to, to take that along the, the route suggestion that Waze would provide to people, so that, I think, may have helped a little bit, hopefully. Uh, but you know, we're happy to work with you about possibilities for the, for the town. We provided a speed radar sign, I think, and, you know, there's no parking, uh, you know, ordinances, like we try to restrict that, so we're consistent with the towns, no parking restrictions, because I think the other concern is people parking there to try to access Jordan Pond uh, house itself. So, you know, I think we want to make sure that the road is safe for residents. We certainly share that, that concern and objective. Uh, but anyway, John can talk a little bit about what the pond house's deliveries look like and, and what we can do there.
Yeah, so there are three, three large semi-trucks, the Dennis Foods, Cisco, and Performance Food Group. Uh, so tho- those vehicles come in three times a week. Um, main shellfish is every day is about a medium-sized delivery truck. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine others that are small or medium-sized or even a van, so a total of twenty-six deliveries a week uh, to, to the pond house.
Is there, she, sorry, I thought you were the, is there a reason they don't go on the Stanley Brook Road?
I don't know that. Yeah, I, I've never instructed them. Uh, what route they take is really not, uh, anything I've talked to them about. However, you know, knowing that, that is an issue, that they are thinking that, we'll do everything we can to get them rerouted and make sure that we want to be good neighbors and certainly wouldn't suggest anybody to go down that road, uh, by any means. You know, I, I've been down that road myself, and it is a little because a narrow road is, you know, the houses are, are close to the road, and it would be would not be ideal to have a semi-truck going down that path.
Two, two questions. Um, thank you all for the, um, and great presentation, Charlie, wherever you are. Um, with regards to the, to the dead end, is there, uh, has there been, uh, in any other town, a seasonal dead end? Um, because if we, if it's, if it's, can't be done to have the Stanley Brook Road open in the winter, and I know that the Stanley Brook Road is long, it's twisty, it's turny, and it's covered in ice. Yeah, it'd be tricky. Wintertime, so there may be a danger element to have traffic routed on that road. Um, and it may be, it may be an, an enormous expense to keep that road open in the winter. But in the summertime, where, when Stanley Brook Road opens, which usually opens on April fifteenth, one could have a seasonal dead end on the Jordan Pond Road, which would absolutely start guiding and training people not to go on the, uh, on the Jordan Pond Road. I would also add, and I live in, I live on the Jordan Pond Road, um, that the delivery truck traffic is significant. It's also fuel deliveries. You know, it's not, it, it is the, it is beyond, um, it is beyond going to the Jordan Pond Road. Um, truck traffic does not respect the local speed limits at all whatsoever. Um, and, um, so it's, it's two specific issues. It's the direct traffic impact of, of the Jordan Pond House, but it is communications and being able to start retraining people that this is a residential neighborhood. The other thing is that with vendors, vendors made for right or wrong, vendors making deliveries on M D I, sometimes you Park Loop Road is the quickest access point to get from Seal Harbor over to Far Harbor. And there's not supposed to be commercial traffic going on Park Loop Road. So again, some, I would think that there's a maybe some mixed messaging out there that might be able to be more strategically placed and communicated with the commercial traffic industry. Thank you.
Yeah, and we, you know, commercial traffic is prohibited on park roads, with the exception of those that are serving Wildwood Stables or the pond house, but you know, Budweiser truck cutting through on Park Loop Road from Seal Harbor to Far, Far Harbor uh, would be restricted. It's the kind of thing that our rangers could enforce if they were in the right place at the right time and had the ability to stop that vehicle, but, um, that's, that's always hard.
Good.
Hi, uh, I'm David, I've been able to live, uh, uh, thirty-six and thirty-eight Jordan Pond Road, which is right on the curve as the trucks are coming by. And it is, it is, it's really dangerous with these trucks coming by, and both the large trucks and the small trucks, with the small trucks just start their acceleration and go around that curve. And it is, uh, we're, we're right on the road. It's, it's really, really disruptive. Um, and they, you know, those roads were not built for semis or even main shellfish style trucks. We do the big truck, this happens to be smaller, not semi, but those are big trucks, so. Um, it is, and it's noisy. And I think their, you know, seasonal concept is an outstanding idea. Um, and, you know, we all love the park, we all support the park. And, um, you know, we think of vibrant Jordan Pond House as a great idea, but there needs to be some respect for the, uh, the residents that are on Jordan Pond Road, all of which is, or most of us are supporters of the park in a big way.
Yes.
Um, uh, I also live on Jordan Pond Road number thirty-one, and I.
Could you, could you identify yourself?
Oh, yes, my name is Philip Hax.
Oh, hi, Philip.
Hi. Um, I just, uh, wanted to add to the inconvenience of residents along the road, a safety factor. Uh, since the Acadia Open Center has been, uh, in, in business, I see a lot more bicyclists on the road, parties of bicyclists. And they're very vulnerable to those trucks and to the delivery trucks, but also to all the traffic that, uh, is so cavalier about the speed limit there. And that concerns me very much. I also see an added factor in the increase in rentals in the village. A lot of children come with their families. And, uh, I see the children that I know from the wintertime, uh, walking up and down the road, mostly on the sidewalk, uh, with other children that come from other places, and, uh, there again, that's a new factor. Uh, where you have quite a lot of unsupervised young people using Jordan Pond Road to visit each other, and, uh, they also are very vulnerable to, uh, traffic that doesn't follow the rules.
Yes.
Hi, uh, I'm Ron Eric. We have property at fifty-two Jordan Bond Road, and, uh, again, thanks to Gerald for his work on this issue, this issue, but it is a uh, to Bill on Bill's point, a serious safety concern. We have nine grandchildren that visit, uh, various times over the summer and, uh, ride up and down that road on their bikes, uh, across the road uh, to their friends' houses, uh, on their bikes. And it's, uh, it's very concerning, frankly, really, to, uh, to think of those, uh, not only the, the excessive speeds that, uh, come up and down the road by regular traffic, but the the, uh, the large delivery vehicles are particularly, uh, bothersome and concerning with the safety of the children. I think the seasonal, uh, seasonal dead end is a brilliant idea. If it could be done, uh, that would help a lot, uh, to, uh, uh, eliminate or control that problem. I know the Stanley Brook Bridge is a potential choke point, uh, for some of those trucks. But, uh, the Island Explorer certainly gets under that bridge, uh, and I, I don't think many of those trucks, uh, have a, a higher clearance than the Island Explorer, and if they do, it seems like, uh, Jordan Pond House could, uh, figure out maybe a solution to that, maybe offloading some of their deliveries uh, elsewhere and bringing them up to the Stanley Brook Road, Road. You know, that would be an added expense, obviously, but it doesn't seem like an unreasonable expense if that, if that bridge clearance is a problem for some of those trucks, too. Thank you.
Eric Stiles, friend of Acadia, resident of Park Harbor. Um, my former organization in New Jersey, we had a state park that, uh, flooded a nature preserve municipal road, had a lot of problems in July and August with traffic in New York City, folks coming out from the city for first floor in the mountains in LA, or so. Went through that, we did do a seasonal, non-internet uh, traffic expert, relatively new to me, but we did shut down with the municipality, we shut down the road that backed through the river. With seasonal nature, law enforcement had their own lock, um, uh, first responders had their own, et cetera, and so we were able to address health and safety concerns, um, with all the authorities and maybe work exploring here. Again, I've got no skin in the game, other than we just want, uh, we will be closing on property that were then of Jordan Pond Road, and as Kevin said, we want to make sure that our staff live on safe streets as well. But we welcome joining the conversation with no expertise, but I can say that in a circumstance, five years ago in northern New Jersey, um, where, uh, municipal and state, uh, park seemed to work well.
Well, I guess if you were looking at the distribution of those parts, there's probably a nice bell curve to the traffic following.
There certainly is. But, and what I would say too, we work well with the park. They, like you said, the sign was purchased by the park and put there on the southbound lane. Uh, if we don't choose to dead-end the road, I, I know that I've talked to Darren, Chief Ranger, um, and tried to go putting another sign in a northbound direction. Um, in calming traffic is difficult. I, I know that I've heard a lot of people say. Of those twenty-nine thousand cars, I only, I have less than five hundred that are between thirty and forty miles an hour, and nothing above that. I'm not saying that they're not look like they're fast, because on a narrow road, a large truck at thirty miles an hour is fast.
You're at twenty-five miles.
Yeah, yeah.
We have this issue on Beacon Hill where we live in winter time.
Yeah.
And, yeah, very narrow streets, but they can't change the speed limit, right, because it's a state thing.
Well, no, same, yeah, and we can't put it any lower. The state dictates twenty-five, and, and anything under twenty-five is unenforceable from a municipality standpoint. So, um, but so I think another option to vote, another sign in northbound direction, if you don't. But those are still around four thousand dollars a piece. I know that you purchased last month, we have some money that if we could split it off or something like that, if we, if we wanted to do that as well.
So, legally due again. Um, so the other thing that I've seen in other places, and I don't know whether it's ever been explored on the island, is being able to put, um, temporary rubber speed bumps across the road, and, and I have understood that there may be some concern with emergency vehicles being able, you know, being able to get to an emergency quite quickly, the speed might, might interfere with that. My guess is that the level of the speed bump, you know, there's three inches, probably wouldn't do anything but deter people to temporarily slow down.
Yeah. So. I guess, I, I might point to Brian to answer that one, about temporary speed bumps, or if that's something that's even feasible for the towns. I don't know. Okay, um, and, and I, I remember the high school putting the speed bumps, and I, and then I took them all back out, so. Um, I think it was more of an inconvenience for the people that were coming from school than it was to the traffic in here, like traffic. Um, so, uh, yes, I think some of it.
There'd be a lot of spilled coffee.
That's right, yeah.
Uh, it also may make more noise.
I, I understand. Try, try to think, think outside the box, you know?
Well, and I know with traffic engineer, I, I know there was also mentioned in the letter too, you know, I, I, we've tried a little bit around the Jackson Lab. Um, and there's still more coming with main DOT because just really trying to narrow the road even further, which sounds strange, but the, the narrowing of the road makes it feel more congested and slows traffic downward. Uh, which seems counterintuitive, uh, but if there were sidewalks on both sides, I don't know, but that all comes with a cost, too.
Oh, you see it in Europe, being done actually a lot. That actually then the traffic, that's what we, it's moving through.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
So, you know, and so those are often, but like I said, they all come with a price tag, and, and I don't know if that's feasible or something, maybe more, because it, it may not fix the problem. And, and the ability for us to restrict traffic, I think, is the bigger issue. Um, because you just don't have the municipality to, to close the road other than, you know, stop traffic altogether. Because we just don't have the municipality to close the road other than, you know, stop traffic altogether. Yeah. Yeah, I like leaving.
Steve, thank you a lot. I live at, uh, Upper Dunbar Wildwood. A lot of these vehicles they spoke of don't enter the Jordan Pond Road from Mount Free. They come down up the Dunbar. There's a tremendous amount of parked trucks that stick us on the roadside on the park. Dawnland, Vans, the white, blue, a lot of their employees. That's where the playground is. And, uh, so it's not just on the Jordan Pond. There's a lot of parking issues in the whole village. And, uh, and I'm in hopes that we're going to be able to discuss a lot of them either tonight or later on, please. To, uh, try to figure out how to handle some of those other problems in the village. But Jordan Pond isn't the only one that's got traffic on it through the Jordan Pond House.
No, they turn on the well, they're, they're right across from there. So you're definitely right.
But if they close, if we did the seasonal closing, then they will not need to use, I don't know, parts.
Right. I'm just saying that Jordan Pond isn't done already.
Yeah, totally agree.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I, I would like to take the occasion offered by the victim to say that another, uh, very difficult point of traffic control in, in, uh, in the village is the post office on Main Street. And, uh, I, ever since I've come up here, I've been surprised if there can be enough car if you were ripped off or some kind of an injury, you know, or worse. And I thought at one point when the school was in the basement of the church building there. Then maybe we could petition that have the speed limit drop to fifty miles an hour. Am I correct that that's possible for a school?
It's not there anymore.
Yeah, I know. It went, it left just when we were getting going. But, uh, that really fifty miles an hour is a much more sensible, uh, speed for that particular.
So.
Is there something we can?
Yeah, so I, I'd like to sort of rein this in a little bit. Uh, we're talking about a very specific issue. And although I understand your concerns, because we have the same problems in Otter Creek. We have speed bumps, believe me, we haven't been talking about this for like, seems like forever. You know, what can we put in to slow people down? And we get the same data that shows that we're learning that many people speeding. And you're absolutely right. If you're on your feet and you're watching a car coming toward you and they're going twenty-seven miles an hour, it looks like they're going forty. And that's what you walk away with. Definitely worth addressing all that, but I would like to get back to Jordan Pond Road. Okay, uh, because we could sit here all night. Yes.
Hi. Oh, sorry. My, my name is Bob Weir. I live at forty, Jordan Pond Road. And I want to thank Charlie for kind of bringing us all together and, and bringing this issue to the forefront. But I appreciate your turn to, to respect. I, I appreciate trying to bring it back to Jordan Pond Road. And I guess, um, I just want to leave the thought that, uh, I'll speak for myself. I, I, I love the park. We came here because of the park. And I think we're a big supporters of the park. And, and so while the park, um, you know, it's, it's a double edged sword. We want the park to be successful, but the success of the park is kind of causing our community, our neighborhood, some challenges. And, and so I think it has to be an all, all option, excuse me, all options approach to this. Yes, there are trucks that are delivering to Jordan Pond House. Yes, there are big trucks. And, and actually, you're listed in include your Coca-Cola truck, and that's a very regular visitor wrecked street. So I'll support Charlie on that. So if we can get the delivery trucks off the street, that's great. But there's also, um, park visitors that are coming up the street. These include RVs, these include people with forest trailers that are going to Wildwood. And, and so I, I wonder if we can kind of revisit the question or revisit, how do we mark the road in a more visible way that is not a through street? There are signs at either end now. In fact, there's a sign halfway up the road that is not a through street, which kind of baffles me a little bit. Because if you're halfway up the street, you're probably not going to turn around to go back. But, you know, is there a way to improve signage to, highlight that it's not a through street? Put them closer to the, the either end or whatever the traffic experts here would, would, um, suggest doing it. But I think, you know, not only is it truck traffic, it's, it's, uh, vacation traffic, it's RV traffic, it's all the traffic. So let's not just focus exclusively on Dawnland. Thank you.
Thank you. It, it seems to me that the, the best suggestion is Lee Lee's and John's to, to explore making that a dead end in the, I'd be in favor if that of a seasonal. Um, not if it was year round. But, um, and the other item would be, can those trucks, those big trucks get under the bridge? And that's something that you would need to.
No, I think three of them could not. The rest of them could.
But I know they have smaller trucks, because they certainly do run around Beacon Hill in smaller trucks.
So I know Cisco does have a smaller one, occasionally they'll come in. Um, I don't know that Dennis or PFG does, but I don't know when they, no, I'm not, I don't know when they use those or not. But, but would you have the permissions to have them come in, park boot would come down? And that would have to be for, it's a free semi trucks. And then the rest of them could certainly use, yeah, right.
If they couldn't go through there, they'd find a way. Yeah.
Could you explore specifically with those vendors to see?
Yeah. We've, uh, we've been in a situation with Cisco this week, uh, to get them re-rolling. Uh, we're going to work on the rest of them.
Thank you.
And I'll give you my email. So you have, if anybody has any continued concerns, this is certainly up to me.
Yeah. Could you perhaps consider having, asking your employees and asking your own white delivery vans to please use the park access road? And if they are on our street, ask all the people that are directly connected to.
We sent a message out on Friday for all, all staff.
Yeah, and to please obey the statement if they are on our boat. Because I would like to echo what Phil said earlier. We have a tremendous amount of children on our street. We have a huge number of people walking, jogging, bicycling, we have a lot of pedestrian traffic. And your sidewalk is just the curve of the road. And so there's not much livability there for pedestrians. And, you know, I think Charlie probably saw the video Charlie had of one of our neighbors jogging up the street. Getting pushed back by the big truck coming through. But it's also a lot of that smaller traffic. You know, white vans off and down the street dozen times a day. More than that. So that's maybe something that's a little more doable immediately. Yeah.
And then one other suggestion might be to, um, have an off-site staging area where, you know, your coolers and stuff that you didn't have. Stuff coming in smaller vans up Jordan Pond Road. That may be a very viable solution as well. A big, uh, one of the big trucks, they have the smaller ones out of this part of the country.
A semi could come in off of two thirty-three and come on Parkwood Road and come south. That's what, that's what John is sort of like. Because the height restriction on British.
Yeah. I like the thing we have. There are many, there are, there are, there are options here. Everybody works together on it. Just an offer if the town decides to pursue a second, uh, sign and the cost is four thousand. And friends of Acadia can assist with their share. Please follow up. You'd like to be part of the coalition.
Very generous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh.
There's a man in the back that.
Yes, where?
Uh, forty-nine.
Go ahead.
My comment is to the Jordan Pond, that you have potentially an enforcement goal here too. So it's more than just sending a memo through to your suppliers. Uh, you can, um, enforce it economically if you feel that that's worthwhile. I think that is my, um, and hopefully you can force them to then take care of it by that. My second point is there's more than one, uh, routing on apps to get down Jordan Pond Road. So just to raise, Kevin, thank you for doing that. Has been singled out and certainly local map and others that, uh, could be here as well, if we don't have them.
Right. So I guess the, the point of this is to actually come up with an action plan, right? So I hate new committees. I think we have a traffic committee. Don't, do we still have a traffic committee? Dang.
So we chose to point that to staff. So I'm comfortable working with.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Awesome. Yeah, okay, good. I have a plan. I just want to say one more time, I'm not a fan of signs. Guess I think people do not pay attention to signs.
If we're here, here.
I could just add one comment.
Yeah.
And that is that the not a through street, first of all, doesn't mean crap unless you do the seasonal block off the road. Because it is in fact a through street. The other thing is we're more than willing and anxious to work with all of you to find a solution to this. Mindful of the fact that it is a public road. And there are certain restrictions and limitations on what we as a board can do. We can make recommendations. We can work with all of you to make a lot of this happen. But we have limits also, uh, that are controlled by the state, not the least of which is the speed limit. But this has been a great discussion. I think we're off to a good start. We're hearing some good things from, uh, Jordan Pond House representatives, uh, to work with us. And I think we're going to come to a, a reasonable solution. We dealt with this issue, how many years ago, Martha, five, six? And we put up not a through street signs. And we now see how that worked. So, um, now this is, this is exciting to hear other ideas and, and especially, uh, friends of Acadia willing to step up and, and, uh, work with us, work with the community. It's, this is awesome. This is what community is all about, figuring out this kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very rare, by the way. All right, uh, next item, update on Beach Hill Crossroad Culver.
You know, you're missing a lot by leaving now. The rest of the things are thrilling.
Right, oh. Great, right, the next, uh, Beach Hill Crossroad. Yeah. I clicked some of the information in, uh.
Yeah.
In the, uh, memo that I sent to you, but, um, as of this morning, they did the, uh, initial aid and made a good job. So they can change a little bit thickness, but that's just part of, we were anticipating, except minimum three is, is a little thicker. We wanted to match what's on the road.
Right, right.
Oh, okay.
Didn't want to make a chance of having a section done in as good a condition as the rest of it. So that's why we wanted to match it. They did do the states aid in this morning. A little worried I was going to come here with bad news, but it's good news. They did get it done. It is open now.
Oh, great.
Great through traffic. And it's pretty much on tonight. Couple of days.
Yeah.
But it's, and they have, they have a slow start to begin with, and it took a little bit of, uh, wrangling.
Yeah.
With personnel at our end to make sure that they got together and.
And John got mine that.
One thing I will also add to this is that we have, uh, an inspector on site, construction observation for, from the engineer that did the design. And he has been instrumental in keeping this project moving forward. It's extraordinary to have someone who's good at that job in that space, because it, it really does help tremendously. Uh, so it is, it is moving along. We'll kind of be behind schedule, but, but not bad. And I think we're going to have a very good.
Excellent. Great, thank you. New business. Wow, it's empty.
No, of course, ethics.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's coming up. We're getting, it's getting tabled until we have.
Do we need to move to table?
Move, I'm seeing be tabled until the meeting on the twenty-first.
Second.
They're all on paper. New business, public space special event application, Cadillac Challenge Aid Station, Joanna Fogg, Seal Harbor Village Green. Sunday, October seventh, twenty twenty-three, nine to one.
Move approval.
Second.
Public space special event application, Susan Wedding, Summansby Park, Saturday, June one, twenty twenty-four.
Move approval with the understanding that it is a public space.
Second, but I have some concerns. It sounds like a lot of people. Do we know how many people? And I'm not crazy about microphones down there.
I'm here for any questions.
Oh. How, how many people are you expecting?
Uh, right now, I'm expecting thirty to fifty people.
Yeah. That's not bad. I, I wonder about the use of microphones. Do we have a policy on that, Darlene?
I did read the policy. Uh, the policy is no, I forget the exact word. No, something at some, uh, Simmonsy Park. I would only be there for about thirty minutes in total. I just wanted something so that they would be able to hear the ceremony. It's not the ceremony and reception. The reception will be held at Camp Beach Cliff, uh, right afterwards.
So it's only amplification of the, the actual event, the exchanging of vows and so forth?
Correct. Yeah. I just don't like it when you go to a wedding and everybody is there to hear you and they can't hear anything. That's all.
Yeah.
I, I, I would approve it, but with the stipulation that this is only an exception, because that is a quiet park. And I hate to make this a precedent.
No, I completely understand that. It is a very quiet park. Um, and that is honestly why I picked this location. Because I honestly thought it was a hidden gem of Mount Desert Island. I'm originally from Massachusetts. Hence why I'm here on Zoom.
All in favor?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Public space special event application, Garden Club Mount Desert, Tracy Combs, Combs. Seal Harbor Village Green, Saturday, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, ten to four.
Should be twenty-four.
Oh. Okay, good point.
Sorry. Um, I'm a former resident, um, of this harbor, but before that, twenty years, I'm a resident of Seal Harbor. And, um, we're, we're trying to share it to this car trade. I don't want to see a single.
Can you speak a little louder?
I don't want to see a single car for this event up on Cooksey Drive with the, already now with the construction up there and random parking. It's almost impossible to get a vehicle through, much less an emergency vehicle. And putting three hundred and seventy-five to four hundred people for a garden tour in Seal Harbor on that day. With course is not of any interest to me. We're going to do shuttles and like, that's why we want Village Greens to stage there. Run people up the hill, back down. And then park and make them Marina buses back to Marina in the northeast. Or, or wherever else we end up doing the parking, but no extra congestion. I think you're going to elaborate there. I hope that that could be this year.
So where are they going to park?
Um, various different ideas, but, um, some parking at AAR is possible, some parking in the, for the, um, dozens and people working, uh, and behind it for the gas stations today. They returned for about twenty cars up there. Um, I know that's also Grand Bay Island parking, so then we need to look at that. The target village improvement decided to kind of get a sense of what their, um, ground is art there. Private driveways.
They can all drive and park on Jordan Pond Road, right?
I just wanted, I haven't, uh, we haven't gotten this completely sorted out yet, but our intention is to minimize that impact and stress.
Sounds tricky.
Exactly. Well, we want to jump. The gardens are gorgeous. Everybody wants to see them. So that's, we're going to try to make it work.
And you think there're going to be eight hundred people in the?
That's what we had last year, um, starting to drive in downtown, in the town village of, uh, our base. We could all, the other comment was, uh, saying, could we cap the number? And yes, that's possible. We're doing online ticket sales rather than just, um, paper tickets at the grass. We're going to do it online. We could cap the number. If that was, um, a factor in terms of number of shuttles that we have available, amount of hours during the day that we would run the event. They can drive their private car to the driveway of the, um, garden. And that would go, and hopefully that becomes a precedent for future garden tours too, which are, in my mind, not, um, run thoughtfully in terms of the access.
What, what, what is the money raised for?
The money is about, um, seventeen or eighteen, uh, community. The money is about seventeen or eighteen uh community and garden uh recipients all over masses are um things from World, uh, World Acadia, um, Showroom, Butterfly Garden, um. There's a list, I can get you the full list of the recipients. It's about thirty thousand dollars that we raised and that is distributed to um a variety.
Well.
I have a comment. If I may, I'd like to see this item table pending the submission of a uh parking plan, the logistics of the parking plan. Um, because it is conspicuously absent in this application. Um, and until I see a an actual thought out plan of where people are going to be directed to park uh to suggest that they can all park at the Marina on July twenty seventh is, I think, a little pie in the sky personally, but uh.
Well, that came from the um, uh, Bar Harbor Garden Club last month using the cat parking lot for their parking.
And, and I understand. I just, I would just like to see what the parking plan is going to be rather than just approve this and and say people can park wherever they want. And hope for the best, exactly. So that's, that is my motion that this item be tabled pending the receipt of a a logistical plan for the parking for this event, given that they anticipate some eight hundred people showing up for it.
Uh, clear seventy-five cars for visitors and twenty-five cars for uh workers.
Mm-hmm.
I second the motion.
Good. All right. All in favor?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, item D. Request early closure of administrative offices at one thirty on August eleventh for Police Chief James Willis's retirement celebration.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
That's at the neighborhood house, right?
Mm-hmm.
Item E, consideration of waiving the rental fee for use of the Seal Harbor Fire Station Community Room by Seal Harbor Village Improvement Society on the date of June twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
Second.
Chairman.
Yes.
Can I ask that they amended to read the date of August tenth, two thousand twenty-three?
It's what it says on the, on the memo. Oh. Oh.
It's June twenty-ninth.
Oh, but on the memo it says August tenth. Yes, August tenth.
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second as amended.
All in favor? Request authorization to solicit competitive bids for a new ambulance for the fire department.
Move authorization.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Request authorization to solicit competitive bids for new S U V quick response vehicle for the fire department.
What is a quick response vehicle? Is that a small one that can go up driveways and into?
It's the top side of an S U V, medium, medium sizes.
So that's to go up uh driveways and things that can.
Primarily is, is mentioned in the memo. It's gonna be signed to the paramedic for paramedic's investigation, so they can use that. Yeah.
Do you make many calls outside of the town?
Uh. I've made, I've made. No, no, we don't. We don't go outside of town too much, I mean, right now, probably last year maybe. Less than twenty.
Okay, so that would be because somebody else wasn't available or?
Well, primarily, see, when we split our crew, we have two stations. I still only have one paramedic on duty. Paramedic may be in Salzo that day, the paramedic may be released that day. If the paramedics assigned were at least Harvard and they had a call and uh, brain marks, they want paramedic. This way, the paramedic can get the S U V dispatched. They don't have to go to a fire truck, they don't have to have any.
No, I understood that. It was the, the line, the request for A L S outside Mount Desert was required.
Yeah, typically if our paramedic was outside town, we'd go with the ambulance, just so they have.
I see.
Not always, but typically.
Okay.
But the S U V, you're used to seeing now.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did we move that?
Um, I moved authorization.
Okay, did I second it?
No.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Item H, consideration of approving the revised agreement with Pedophine Engineering and Designing for Construction Administration Services on the Northeast Harbor Fire Station Project and if approved, authorizing the fire chief to sign and execute said agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Request authorization to solicit competitive bids for a new four-by-four single cab pickup truck for the wastewater division of the Public Works Department.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, you think it's gonna be an electric or hybrid?
Well, we do, we will look, but I don't.
Yeah, it's not, not there yet.
And we want to do this.
I was just curious about the availability of extended cab pickup trucks now as opposed to single cab. They're harder to find, actually. So I, and I didn't know if, you know, there's just no use for an extended cab in this situation.
Wastewater, no, it's typically just a single person in the vehicle that's going to protect the plants. We have one that, you know, kind of taking care of each other.
Yeah.
Generally, that's something that when you're on, sometimes they're doing lab or example samples. But mostly we're not putting, not like highways where there are three, four.
Yeah, I just think in an economy of scale, you know, with the extended cabs being so readily available and single cabs are like, well, where are we gonna get one? Kind of thing, but if single cab is what meets your needs, then fine.
The only change really on this is just the uh service body, which we wouldn't probably follow our vehicles to that for the wastewater division, but having one will be useful. Uh, not having to run and get tools this.
Right.
Plus, there's, there's time to spend doing that.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, any other business? Bring them when we hand up. Who, yes?
I was one of the people that called girl and about uh the Jordan Bondage, well, actually not the Jordan Bondage, we thought I could agree with a lot of them. But I, I had a question, traffic committee, and at that time he didn't, a meeting with the traffic committee, he didn't uh think it was a committee. We had them that's going to act for a number of years. So usually we had the police work together. So I just want all the other concern, I mean, there's quite a bit of traffic issues. I mean, Seal Harbor, we're getting a lot of runoff from the national park, you know, and uh, and tourists are like that. Just so there's a lot, and plus people in. Can't blame it on all the tourists in the park. So uh, I just want to make sure there's a lot of other issues, steamboat, warf road, Cooksy Drive. All of those are parking and uh stuff that, that don't get overlooked, just. You know, going under the bus, uh, pond road, I like to have it all caught together. It's a doable thing, you know, so. All the issues that are concerning a lot of other residents that don't live on Jordan Bond Road uh get hurt as well.
Okay, I think you guys are working on steamboat work, right?
Steamboat work, that's part of our daily group that um parking enforcement does. Uh, are you still seeing more since those signs have been put up or relocated in and around the, the yacht club or you have more?
I know, but I, I mean, a few years ago, uh, we made that one-way road and I'd like to address that with somebody. Well, looking into that again, and what we did is we went from uh New County Road, they're by the library, down Steamboat to uh, to the town dog one way. And then we made, you could walk Steamboat Warf Road to uh Cooksy Drive and it's gonna be right on Cooksy. It's a two-way road, but it's gonna left on Cooksy and it was a one-way road north back to uh New County. And that is just as bad as I was uh getting a emergency vehicle up onto the hill as a single warf road is. I mean, it was now what used to be with one guy. Hostile now, they got the, the son, the father, the mother, the grandparents and all the grandkids got cars parked along there. That's just as bad as steamboat warf road. And uh, so I just like, there's a whole bunch of other stuff uh that I think should be addressed as well as some just, you know. Make sure that everything is looked at in the village, not just the one road.
Yeah, do we have any policy whatsoever in terms of what the regulations are on those curvy roads up there?
I know that Mike has chanted before when we talked about emergency vehicle access, especially when we're talking about steamboat warfare. I know that's problematic.
That's terrible.
Um, so I guess I'd look more to probably N F P A regulations on what, but I know we're, we're not in compliance on steamboat warfare because we just don't have, even with the parking spaces, I don't think they have the distance to go. Jerry, I just, I, I have to concur with Steve and I just want to point out, I'm not aware, but we, we had our second accident happen a couple of weeks ago. Fire truck on uh Main Street, Sioux Hall Road, uh, second one in ten years, probably just within fifty feet each other, right across the post office. Uh, it was on Saturday with libraries having a sale, so it was overwhelming, but I mean, that street was just packed with sites.
Terrible.
Well, um, the first accident involved a ladder truck, pretty significant damage, but the truck had a service for about a month. Uh, I think we ended up towing the car. This one wasn't sustained, but what's happening is um you got one lane and the, there's cars parked so long that once our trucks are committed coming down the yard, car comes at you, it don't yield. You have to go someplace and we end up in the car. Uh, but when it's happened twice within the same period, it, it to me is a way to fly, you know, and then you also have the other thing that you're taking an emergency vehicle out of service. It's stressful on drivers, so it's the volunteers. Um, so it's, I mean, we gotta do something, we start thinking of something. It's just when these special events happen, um, like everything is suggested, come up with a parking plan. Um, just so better parking will, especially if you're talking three hundred, four hundred vehicles, Seal Harbor's gonna be overwhelmed.
Yeah, you're crazy. You can't, you can't, they, they shouldn't be parking on both sides of that road.
Right, and you know, they're, I, I talked today and looked at it about this, it's a problem. And I don't think there's any solution, but they're trying, they're parking and traveling. Then we have, you know, one's one lane, we have a place, oh, these trucks, and it just takes one person not to yield. Uh, that's what happened with the ladder truck. You already thought somebody's gonna yield to them. They kept going and we didn't. And it was either hit somebody head on or go over and then park car.
So what, uh, what, what is the, what's the regulation? Now, did he have his, a lot of his lights on or?
No, they're actually returning from a fall, so then we're able to get them through license center, but they're returning to the stations at one hour.
I mean, uh.
I have nothing dippy to add to that.
I think the planning board should also be involved in this because uh, for the past years now, Cooksy Drive, I called the police several times myself. Uh, other caretakers have, luckily the fire department has driven up there and asked them to move the vehicles. You know, them guys show up to work and now they're parked from Roland Road all the way down uh to the other end of Roland Road, you know, on these big projects, the vast families haven't done. And now we've got Mitch Rails, big project going on there and I mean, it's there shoots dump trucks riding on their roads now. They get in the middle of Steamboat Warf Road and, and uh a car that's parked will come around, come down, up Steamboat Warf Road from the town dog, as you say, pull out or pull in the park against all the other cars. And well, geez, I don't, I don't want him to get out of that, so we ate, they a pack for sixteen, eighteen inches out more than the other vehicles. So a dump truck comes down. He's stuck right there in the middle of the road, you know, two or three guys behind him, they won't move, you know, and so you just sit there and then you get, I mean, it's just it's, you know, it's just a big, big mess all gone, you know, June all the way through, you know.
Yep.
You know, we don't have a lot of control over what we can find people. I mean, we can't make it cost prohibitive for them to not pay attention to the little signs.
I'm not signed to this either.
No, I, I don't believe in signs, but it.
But no parking signs, you see them.
Yeah, but if you, but if you have a, if you have a meaningful sign attached to it with like five hundred dollars, but I think that's regulated by the state is.
Uh, no, we couldn't.
No, we, we're not gonna.
Well, you know, then we're gonna have the problem. I mean, you gotta, you gotta put teeth in somewhere or you're gonna have to go nowhere.
And I, I talk with guys from Cranberry Island all the time. They go, I'll pay the parking fine. Ain't nothing, I gotta do that, have to walk it out, you know?
Yeah.
But any other thing would be sign, yeah, I mean, when you start signing up on Cooksy Drive, you're gonna have to sign the majority of the majority of Seal Harbor Hills, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I was, no, I was thinking more of the, the, on Main Street.
On Main Street, oh. Yeah, and in the Main Street, I think I spoke about it last, I, I don't know what prompted paint D O T not to paint the white lines on either side, but there, so it's now parking on both sides again. And, you know, we try to use our discretion and make sure that, but that's a perfect example, you know, with that like that.
And you can't put no parking sign.
We could, we could put temporary of no park, but that was not coordinated with us for their fair for parking. And so it's not a bad suggestion, but the chief just to, to require you're gonna have large events in small village areas to have a parking plan.
Like that would hit the library sale.
Yeah.
I was working that and uh, they just picked them blue cones up and threw them on the green. You know, it's like until, until the police showed up, made an announcement over the loudspeaker, the band-aid plan that they were gonna get told on a ticket, then they decided to leave and then they had a parking, the first one walking up and down the street. But until that, they just sort of called on the green.
These fairgoers are real rebels, aren't they?
Yeah, they are.
Geez.
Yeah, vacation land is the la-la land.
Well, they do that all the time. Like I was walking, they were walking directly yesterday. They're picking that up and walk, and you know, right up by where the uh, the walkway going down.
Where they all park.
No parking sign, guy pulls right in, parks like that, walks down.
Yeah, drives me crazy.
Suggestion only, right?
Right. Optional or chance, non-suburban residents only, I think, but yeah.
Well, that goes with the stopional signs, you know?
You know, it.
It's an optional stop.
In order to freak, we'd have limitless parking all the way down Route Three, it seems, in front of the hall, all the way up.
Yeah.
Hundreds of cars to go in there on both sides.
We can shuttle it.
We don't do businesses though.
Maybe we should get a hold of the garden as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, let's.
All right, okay.
Let's pay the money.
A lot of work and a lot of these.
Yeah.
Starting with anybody.
Emergency traffic.
What I, what we should do, Steve, let's come back in October and see how the problem is. That's, that's the issue to people.
I wanted to say to some of those people the night, it's nice and quiet in January.
We can solve, we can solve it. You could get back visitation levels the way they were ten years ago. A lot of these problems will go away, but you know, I don't think we're getting there.
Hard to go back in time.
Very.
Okay, now, Treasures Laws. Approved and signed, Town Invoice A P twenty-four oh eight in the amount of two million, two hundred eighty-one thousand sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents.
Move approval and signature.
Second.
All in favor? Approved and signed Treasures Payroll, State Fees and Payroll Benefits, A P twenty-four oh five, A P twenty-four oh six, A P twenty-four oh seven. Town Payroll, P R twenty-four oh two, P R twenty-four oh three, P R twenty-four oh four, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
Signature.
Second.
All in favor? Acknowledgement, School Invoices, A P two, School Payroll, P R two, and P R three. No voided disbursements, total three hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
With acknowledgement.
Second.
New journal.
So moved.
Awesome, all in favor?